Thank you. Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment in the city of Toronto is called to order. My name is Larry Clay, and I will be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Phil Gosh, Zaher Bayet, and Nazila West, and our Deputy Secretary of Treasury is Selena Salantino. Did I say Selena?
Yes.
I did. Sabrina. Pardon me. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bag, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and are registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request by decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set at the bottom of the decision of the Committee. Today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncondested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the Committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the Committee. The Committee may also ask questions and take the matter into Committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the Committee, and I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the Committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and Committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the Committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to combine your marks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the Committee; then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on the speakers first in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut those issues that were raised by the speaker. And that will mark the end of the discussion, and we will be taking that into Committee for decision. Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, we do have deferral requests, but I will just do the declarations of interest. Anyone have a conflict in any matters this afternoon? We're good? Okay, we can deal with the deferral requests?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have two deferrals, and I will need a motion from the Committee members due to lack of notification because of the Canada postal strike. These two applications are automatically scheduled for the January eighth hearing, so anyone listening in can participate at that hearing. The sign on the property will remain on the subject sites, as well as all of the webpage and the Application Information Centre has all the necessary documents for review. Okay? So the two applications are Item Number twenty-three, File Number A-0913/24TEY, municipal address six forty-six and six forty-eight Duffren Street, and one and three Boland Avenue. The second item is Item Number twenty-seven, File Number A-0984/23TEY, and the address is two Tecumseh Street. So again, it's automatic deferral for lack of notification because of the postal strike.
Thank you, Sabrina. Is there anyone in the audience today that were here for either of those two items? Okay, great, thank you. Look for a motion. Nazila?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to defer, to automatically defer, to application, Application Number twenty-three and Application Number twenty-seven, due to lack of notification. And the next hearing, these two items will be heard at January eighth, 2025 hearing.
Great, thank you. Motion by Ms. West, seconded by Mr. Bayet. All in favor? Those items are deferred.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We may want to begin with Item Number twenty, only because we don't have the agent online for Item Number nineteen. And is the agent here? Item nineteen? Oh, okay. Okay.
All right.
We can deal with Item Number nineteen.
Item nineteen, okay. Nineteen, A and B, is fifty-two and fifty-four Indian Trail. This is an application to maintain a one-story detached garage in the rear yard, which is currently under construction. The existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling will be maintained and unaltered. That was for fifty-two. For fifty-four, it is to construct a one-story detached garage in the rear yard. The existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling, including the existing hot tub, will be maintained and unaltered. Committee has before it a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a covering letter from the agents, Decision Number eight, twelve-seventy slash nineteen TEY affecting the subject property, an arborist report. We have staff reports from Urban Forestry, correspondence and interest from B. Aronson, no address provided. You have opposition correspondence from W. Hoffman, no address provided, one sixteen sixty-one Blair Street West, Jeremy Kraus, no address provided, Nancy, no surname or address provided.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person, as well as two registered speakers. I'm going to ask the speaker to sit down. We're going to hear from the agent first, and then we'll call you up to speak, okay?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Have your name and address, please.
Absolutely.
Is your mic on? Red button?
Says that it's on.
Okay.
There we go. Sorry about that. Name is Stephanie Matviva. I'm an associate with Glan� Snarren Associates. Address is ten King Bridge Garden Circle, Missauga. I'm the registered agent for the owner.
Great, thank you. Are you aware of the status of your lot addition application?
Meaning what? The delegated approval authority?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
And that it was refused?
I was not aware of that.
Okay. It has been refused, so...
Yes.
Does that impact your application and your proceedings for today?
It does, and the two minor variances applications that are before the Committee today are triggered by the lot addition and consent application.
Right. So if your lot addition application has been denied, that will, I presume, affect your application before us for the variances?
It will, yes.
Okay. How would you like to proceed?
Like a moment to confer for a second.
Sure. Yep, please do. I mean, one option for you is deferral.
I understand that. I just would like to speak to the clients and understand what are options going forward.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Do you think maybe we should hold this item? You can have the conversation with your clients outside, and then we'll hear the next item and then come back to this one.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Let's go on to Item Number twenty-nine-nine-six, Woodbine Avenue. This is an application to construct a new four-story multi-unit detached building to contain a municipal shelter. There will be one parking pad space abutting Strathmore Boulevard. Committee has before it a copy of the minutes from the October twenty-third public hearing, a copy of the plan of surveys, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent, staff report from TTC, correspondence and support from Rena Ginsburg and Boyd Reimer, no address provided, and from the St. Clair-Aconner community. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person. What I see on my list here is that we have speakers. I believe they're in support. Who is in the audience today speaking? If you can just raise your hand? Okay. So we do have a number of speakers, some of which will be in support of the application. We'll hear from the agent first.
Okay. Thank you. Did I not see a community planning report on this application? No?
I didn't see that.
Okay. Great. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, members of the Committee. My name is Robert Alexiak. I am an intern architect with Turow Architects. We are located at three-three-nine Queen Street East, Toronto, Ontario, M5A1S9. The proposed building is a four-story municipal shelter. It will have six units, ten beds. It has programmed for staff to be on-site twenty-four-seven to support the municipal shelter, and we have a number of support letters. From our count, we have two letters of clarification and support, fifteen letters of support. There were four letters of concern, three letters of objection. These were all submitted before our previous hearing date, which was in October. At that point, we deferred and took the chance to meet with the community. That consultation process began with reaching out to local councillor Brad Bradford. At that point, we decided we would have an open house with the community, where we had members of the community come in, where they were informed, they had their concerns answered, and we have a number of additional support letters that came in. Two letters were submitted in November, and four letters actually came in very recently, last minute. I have them printed out today, and I understand they were submitted too late for the Committee to accept them, but I do have them in case you'd like to review them.
Can you just... Thank you. I was here, I think, when this application was brought forward in October, and it sounded like the need was to consult with the community. It sounds like you've done that. Can you just give us an overview of what's changed in your application now from what it was previously?
Sure. The first concession we made was to have frosted glass on the windows that faced any of the neighbours. So we are respecting the neighbour's privacy, and we're also respecting the privacy of those who will inhabit this building. The second was we made an adjustment to our site plan to remove any sort of proposed ideas of how the landscaping in the rear would be used. There were some concerns from neighbours about the amount of chairs that we had shown in our design, and whether that would suggest any large gatherings on the site. But that was just a design choice, and it was omitted from our drawings and shouldn't be considered by the Committee.
There was a fire pit back there originally. Is that still there, or that's been removed?
That's removed, yeah. That was a design suggestion by the architect.
Okay. Great, thank you. Panel, we have some speakers, but is anything burning before we hear? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, let's start with our speakers that are here in person. One by one, you can come up to the podium.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Sharon. I live on Strathmore Boulevard, and I had been here at the previous meeting in support of the deferment, and I can confirm that, in fact, they did have the community meeting. I attended the meeting. I had all of my concerns addressed, and certainly, as he outlined in the design changes, that they too have gotten rid of many of my concerns. And so I am in support of their variances being accepted.
That's great, thanks very much. On Strathmore, whereabouts on Strathmore?
Five thirty-six, so I'm within stone's throw distance of the proposed site.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Liatt Ross. I'm here representing the Danforth Jewish Circle Social Justice Committee. We strongly are in support of this proposal. We feel that more housing needs to be built in general, and support of housing in particular for this very vulnerable part of our community is really necessary. We also really support the Indigenous-led organisation that is going to be overseeing this project.
That's great, thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Hi. Thank you for allowing us to... I hope I didn't break it to speak. My name's Chris Tezenhausen. I'm a recently term-completed board member at Toronto P Flag. Toronto P Flag, for the last fifty years, has been an all-volunteer organisation of parents, friends, and allies of people on the two-S-LGBTQIA-plus spectrum. We're aware of the work being done by Two Spirits of the First Nations, and in particular, this project very recently came to our attention. We're very strongly in support of it. That organisation does fine work. We love the idea that it is First Nations people figuring out solutions for First Nation people, and we think it's in the spirit of reconciliation. It seems to be very nicely planned, and I appreciate the consultation process they've gone through as well. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Next.
Yeah, you're good. Hi.
Hi there. My name is Bev Kincaid. I live on Springdale Avenue, which is a couple of blocks away from the proposed site, and I'm just going to read a prepared statement, because I'm speaking on behalf of myself and seven other individuals and families who have supported this statement. As residents of the Beaches, East York area, we're writing to express our strong support for the proposal to transform a vacant building at nine-ninety-six Woodbine to transitional housing for Indigenous youth. This project will provide essential housing at a time when housing affordability is in crisis, and will be run by Two Spirit of people of the First Nations, a respected community-based organisation whose office is located just around the corner. The plan provides multi-unit housing on a main street across from a subway station at a size and scale that's appropriate for the location and neighbourhood. As long-time residents of the area, we believe that the proposal presents a meaningful opportunity to provide safe and affordable housing for Indigenous youth, and we welcome this project in our community. And I said, as I said, I have eight individuals and families who have signed this statement. Shall I read their names?
No, I think you're... We're fine. I will take your word for it.
So that's it. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
Next speaker. You can come up. Yep.
Good afternoon.
Your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Salvatore Nacello. My address is one thousand Woodbine Avenue.
Is the red light on?
Pardon?
Red light.
Red light? Just push the red light button?
Or move to the other one. Okay.
Salvatore Nacello, one thousand Woodbine Avenue, Toronto, Michael Four Charlie, Four Charlie One.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
I've been a long-term resident at one thousand Woodbine. You know, the house has been owned by the family since fifty-four, so I've seen the history and the evolution. Today, what I heard is mostly people that were supporting the merits of the development, which I do not... The merits speak for themselves, you know. Anyone would be foolish, any Canadian at least, the type of person that I am, that I've seen today, of course, would support the whole idea of the shelter. That's not my point, and that's not why I'm here. I'd like to point out that, as I understand it, and I'm not involved in real estate in any way, shape, or form, but that there is a Committee of Adjustment to review variances, and they're referred to as minor variances. And my point is, is that it appears to me, as a layman and a non-expert and a non-real estate person, that, you know, just to give you one example, the floor space, according to the bylaws, should be point-six of the size of the lot. Now, this particular development is at one-point-seven-seven. So, you know, that's approximately a three times multiple. It doesn't sound like it's minor to me, but I point that out. And, you know, the other, probably even more concerning, adjustment would be that the height, you know, although somehow it has, you know, it's not really... I can't explain it, but the wall will be almost twelve metres, whereas the zoning only allows for eight-point-five. So again, that's, you know, it doesn't fit into the area. These are not minor adjustments. So that's the two main points on that. The other one is that during the open house that was discussed earlier, somebody told me, he said, "Look, we looked at various properties. We looked at other alternatives. This particular property is very close to the headquarters of the group, you know, the Two-Spirit Nation, and this is the one that made the most sense." And certainly, no one looked at... My property, by the way, would have been spectacular, just because of the layout, and certainly, no one approached me. Now, I believe that this is a situation where a round peg is going into a square hole. The city of Toronto has owned this piece of real estate for six, seven years since the new subway got put in. It has restrictions. It has restrictions on development. City of Toronto, of course, and rightfully so, you know, as we all do, need to, you know, recognise that there's an obligation to the Indigenous. And, you know, so we have this property. City of Toronto has it essentially for free, but can gift it. And, you know, to the Two-Spirit Nation, hey, why not? You know, please help us, you know, with the government and the Canadian government, and who's paying who what, doesn't matter. But my point is, is that that was not the best use for those funds, simply because the city of Toronto already had a piece of real estate that was sort of a difficult piece of real estate to own. And lastly, thank you very much for listening to me, and I appreciate your time. And, you know, I hope the decision goes my way.
Thank you, sir. Can I just confirm? You said you were one thousand?
I am at one thousand, adjacent to the subway station.
You're on the other side of the subway station to the subject property.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah. If I walked out of my house, I walk right into the subway station. If I cross Strathmore, I would be at nine-ninety-six.
So from your vantage point, what would you say the impact on your property is of this development?
Well, I believe there will be impact. I was informed. There were experts at the open house. One of the lawyers, I think, I believe she was a lawyer, and said, "Look, studies have been done. Values don't go down." This is not about value. I think it's more about... Look, I don't have a problem with this. I hope that, you know, because if the development goes through, I will be the next person to come and present my case for my development ideas, you know, to be allowed a variance three times, you know, a land coverage. That'll be terrific for me. So, you know, I'm sort of in a win-win. I hope that that would help, and if it didn't help, then, you know, I hope it wasn't favouritism because it's the city of Toronto that, you know, is part of the deal. That's kind of... I think you get the gist of it.
All right, I do.
But my property was... I'm telling you, it was perfect as a development site, but this is way too far along to turn the clock back, and I understand that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have anyone?
Next speaker. See none? Okay, then we're going to go to those that are virtual. So our first speaker is from three-zero-four Springdale Boulevard. Stephanie Radcliffe.
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Hi. If you could give us your full name and address, please.
My name's Stephanie Radcliffe. My address is three-zero-four Springdale Boulevard. I'll speak briefly, because there were a number of people who already spoke in favour of the proposal. I registered, because I was disappointed to read some of the objections, but it sounds like a lot of the neighbours' concerns have been alleviated. Just here to say I've supported the proposal. I'm glad to see this replacing a boarded-up house that's been vacant for over a decade in my neighbourhood, and the structure that's being built, I think, matches the current character of the neighbourhood, and I think the height variances are very appropriate, given that it's on a major street. I also think the location makes sense. It's near transit. It's near... There's a lot of bicycle parking, and that there's support nearby for the community. I was also really disappointed to read comments against this proposal that were disparaging its efforts as counter to reconciliation. I think partnering with Indigenous organisations is exactly what the city should be doing. I hope this model is successful, and it can be replicated in many other neighbourhoods.
Great, thank you very much, ma'am. We have one more?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We just have a couple more to get through.
One more?
You've been unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Barbara Gokalova. I am a homeowner in the community. I live just south of Danforth on Alda Grove Avenue, and I pass the site every time I go up to the subway and take the TTC. And I would also like to just speak briefly in favour of the proposal. I think many of the points that I would reiterate have been addressed also really well by Stephanie just immediately before me. I think the variances are minor from my perspective in terms of the overall character of the neighbourhood, and specifically the site being located so close to the major roads and transit options. And, yeah, I think it's a great proposal from that perspective. We know the uses as of rights, so I'm not going to speak to that, but I welcome this proposal in the community, and I hope to see it developed.
Great, thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll now hear from Jeannie Warden.
It's Jeannie Warden, and I am at five Mathi Square in the same community, just a little bit east of there, and I want to add my voices to both Stephanie and Barbara, my voice to both Stephanie and Barbara's voices. Stephanie made the same points that I have to make admirably. I am in support of the project, in support of the variances, definitely in support of anything that will turn this from an empty boarded-up house to a vibrant living place for vulnerable people in our community, and definitely opposed to any more delays through bureaucratic means. That's all I really have to say, and I really appreciate you giving me the chance to speak today.
That's great, thank you very much. And that's it for speakers?
One more speaker.
Oh, sorry.
We'll now hear from Caroline Starr.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yeah, I'm very much in favour of this...
Caroline, sorry, Caroline. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, sorry.
Just give us your full name and address, please.
Right. Caroline Starr, and I live at two-five-four-five Cloridge, but I'm a business owner on the Danforth on the same block.
Okay.
Two-zero-zero-five Danforth. I'm very much in favour of this project. I'm very much in favor of this project, and the variances, I think, are appropriate, especially given other developments in the neighborhood and across the street. I lend my voice to Jeannie and Stephanie's comments. I think that they were really on the mark, and as this site is as a bright zone for shelter, I hope that it goes through with the variances and is able to proceed quickly. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? That's it? That's it? Thanks very much. I think, how the agent back up just for a moment? Sir, I think we've seen pretty much support for your application. I don't know whether there's much for you to speak to beyond that, unless you wanted to share something with the panel before we take it in for a decision.
Yeah, I can quickly speak, just, you know, firstly, say thank you to everyone that came on today and spoken their support. It's appreciated. And, you know, we appreciate the one gentleman who came to speak with his concerns. We did speak with this gentleman before, and we tried our best to kind of reach an understanding. Just really quickly, on the variances, the zoning right now asks for 0.6 of the lot. The current building that is there, which is abandoned, is greater than the 0.6 FSI, and I would assume that every home in the area likely is greater than the 0.6 FSI that currently is there by the zoning. In regards to the building height variances, there is a six-story building at 1017 Woodbine Avenue. Six stories is much greater than four. There is a 35-story building proposed at 985 Woodbine Avenue, and I believe 2076 Woodbine Avenue on the corner, just four houses down, there's a 12-meter commercial building. So, we look at this neighborhood as very much mixed-use, mixed-scale, and the development that we're proposing is very much in character with the neighborhood as it's evolving currently today.
Great, thank you. Panel, any questions? Thank you very much, sir. And let me also thank all the people who have come down today and those who've called in in support. It's refreshing, frankly, to get that kind of support for this kind of institution. We appreciate that you were here before, and there was a fair amount of concern from the community. It sounds like you've reached out and spoken with them, and pretty much all of that concern, for the most part, appears to be addressed, so congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
Let's take this into committee. Is there?
Thank you, Chair. Like you, I remember this application coming before us in October, and at that time, the number of people in opposition was really long. But good for the agent and the community that have resolved so many of the issues, and now there are a lot more people in support, which is wonderful to see. I have absolutely no concerns about this application, and if my colleagues are fine, I'll move a motion to approve.
TTC?
There were TTC conditions, and I think those are the only ones.
Yep.
I don't think there are any other conditions attached.
Okay, motion to approve this application by Mr. Byatt, seconded by Ms. West. All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you very much. Sabrina, can we go back?
Yes.
Does number 19 folks back? We'll return to item number 19, 52 to 54 Indian Trail. Hi.
Hello again.
Just, I'm sorry for the record, your name again. I know you gave it to us already.
Stephanie Metbivou with Glencore and Associates.
Okay. Now, have you had a chance to confer with your client?
I did.
And?
We are requesting a deferral at this time.
Okay. And the deferral will be to, I guess, follow up with the city about the matters?
We'd like to better understand the grounds for the refusal, and we can take according, actions accordingly from that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much for that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is, yeah, two speakers.
Okay. So, we're gonna have to hear from speakers. They've come down to raise concerns, I presume, so we will ask them basically just about the deferral, whether they're okay with the deferral or not.
Yep, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, through, you can come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
If we, if I could have your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Ardal Dear, and my address is 1661 Blour Street West, Toronto.
Okay. So, just so, I hope you understand what's going on here. The applicant, as you know, has put forward an application to sever the properties in the rear yard, presumably to get access from the laneway for the garages that they're doing. What's happened is, the application for them, for what's called a lot addition, to allow for that severance of the properties, has been refused by the city. So, what that means is, right now, they can't proceed the same way they were previously because that portion of their application has been refused. So, having said that, I know you're opposed to this application, but all, now that the applicant has asked for a deferral, a pause, so they can go away and speak with the city and learn more about what the concern from the city is of this application. So, all we really are going to ask you today, we're not gonna ask you to speak to your concerns, I'm just gonna ask you whether you are in favor or are opposed to the request for a deferral of this application.
We don't want, that this application should go ahead.
And so, let me just say, so if this application is deferred, and if it does in fact come back to this committee for approval, you will have an opportunity to speak to this panel about any concerns you might have at that future date.
Thank you.
Okay? So, with respect to the deferral, I appreciate you still oppose the application, but just for the deferral, are you opposed or in support of the deferral?
Well, I don't want, this applicant should go ahead.
Okay.
This is fraud.
And it, so you're, I think what I'm hearing you say is you're opposed to a deferral because you don't want this application, but that doesn't mean this application will go forward. In fact, it won't in the current state.
Okay, this shouldn't go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Is there any other speakers on this one?
Yes, we do. The owner of 323 Indian Road, Peter Adam.
Yeah, hi. I just unmuted myself.
Hi, did, if you could give us your name and address, please, sir?
Peter Adam, 323 Indian Road.
Thank you, sir. Did you hear and understand what I just said previously about the status of this application?
Yes, that is being deferred, I guess, to a later date where the applicant will address whatever concern has been raised by the city.
Yes.
Is that true?
That's exactly right. So, the applicant has asked for a deferral, so all I'm, I know you have concerns about the application, but all I really need to know today is whether you're in support or opposed to the request for a deferral.
I'm sort of neutral. I just wanted to understand the process. I don't really oppose the application.
Okay. If this application does come back at a future date, and you'll have an opportunity to review the application again, and if you have concerns, you would be, have an opportunity to present those concerns to this committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Anyone else? That's it? Okay. All right, we're in committee? Panel, there's a request for a deferral?
Yeah, I, I just want to comment on the delegated consent as well and say that it doesn't seem to me that any other decision could have been made because the application here was to add a property that would have access from a right-of-way, not from a public laneway. So, it was a creative solution, what was trying to be done, but I don't see how it could have been done differently, and then given that, I don't see how these applications can proceed. So, I am curious to know how they'll be cured in the deferred period, but I see no reason not to give them that chance to try.
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I can just offer some process.
Yeah.
So, the delegated consent has been refused as it doesn't meet the 12 criteria of the Planning Act. A notice of decision will be sent out next week, at which point the owners do have the opportunity to appeal the decision to T-Lab. And then, based on the decision from the T-Lab, then it'll determine whether or not they come back with these minor variance applications to the committee.
Okay, that's, that's fair. I guess my thought had been, they might be in a better position if that were their option, to have us decide, deny this, and then have T-Lab deal with everything at once, but they've instead decided to defer. But, but that's, that's.
That's what they've decided. That's their, their option.
Yeah. So, and I think in part because the applicant appeared to be unaware of the decision to refuse the application. So, I think it's reasonable for them to at least take some time to consider what courses of action they might have available to them.
I don't disagree that if that's what they'd like to do, if that's what they ought to be granted, they've asked for a deferral.
Right.
With reasonable grounds. So, given, given that fact, I'll, I'll move to defer these two applications.
Okay. It's a single application, isn't it? Is it actually two applications or a single?
It's two minor variance applications, one for each property.
All right. Motion to defer by Mr. Gosch, seconded by Mr. Byatt. All in favor? Okay, you have your deferral. Good luck. All right. On to item number 21. 1200 Dundas Street West. This is an application to alter the development standards as approved under site-specific zoning bylaw 398-2022 for the eight-story mixed-use building currently under construction by reducing the number of three-bedroom dwelling units. Committee has before it copy of the minutes of the September 18, 2024 public hearing, a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and email correspondence from the agent.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, and I don't see any registered speakers for this item.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Bissett.
Good afternoon.
Name and address, please, sir.
Mike Bissett, B-I-S-S-E-T-T, 3 Church Street, Toronto.
Okay, so you're seeking to alter your development standards, so maybe you could take the panel through what you're proposing?
Yeah, just in brief, this, this application comes as a result of a building, which is a mid-rise building at the, sorry, northeast corner of Lakeview and Dundas, 1200 Dundas, where the units have been sold, marketed as three-bedroom units, based on a requirement of 10% minimum three-bedroom units in the bylaw, which was a settlement I was involved in some years ago. And notwithstanding that the units were marketed and sold as three-bedroom units, there's been requests from purchasers to convert five of the units to two bedrooms. So, there are 11 three-bedrooms that were sold, five of those units have been requested to be converted to two-bedroom units. So, that would result in a reduction in the percentage from 10% to 5%, just over 5%. So, we're seeking a variance to permit the 5% three-bedroom units. The overall number of two and threes combined is still at 25%, sort of consistent with the growing up guidelines. The units are, you know, this is quite a unique circumstance where the, and I think with the intent of this settlement, they were marketed and sold as three bedrooms, and it just comes as a result of purchasers seeking to convert them to two bedrooms. We had discussions with planning staff, and when we filed the application, there was no objections. I see there was no report on the, on the agenda, which is kind of standard practice when there's no objections. So, with that, I would just ask that the committee support the variances. If there's any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer your questions.
Did you, can you just speak a little bit to what the rationale behind the purchaser's request to reduce the number of bedrooms? I mean, I think from a broader planning perspective, I think the general view is that three bedrooms are desirable.
Certainly, the, the city desires to have a certain number of family units, family-sized units available, whether that family decides to have two bedrooms or three bedrooms after they purchase it. The size of the unit, these vary from 750 to 900 square feet. In this circumstance, they've decided that they would like it to be a two-bedroom unit to accommodate their use. Certainly, we have seen some changes, and there's some examples in our staff, in our cover letter, of some reductions in the number of three-bedroom percentages. I would say that, though, the developer in this circumstance did market and sell the units as three-bedroom units, and it was only after that that there was some purchasers deciding they would actually like to convert them to two-bedroom units. So, you know, the rationale is just to accommodate those actual, the interests of those families who purchased the units.
Okay, Bill?
And it's at 5%, you know, we've seen some reductions, and this is a smaller building. It's only, it's an eight-story building. You'll have some of this circumstance occur when you have designs of buildings which have a lot of stepping as well, where you have some resulting units that sort of require layouts that, you know, certain families will have to lay out and accommodate their own interests.
Yeah. Are you the architect or planner?
I'm a planner with both fields.
And were you involved at the time of the site-specific bylaw?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and you're telling me, so, I guess the part that I, that I find a little difficult with what you're telling me, if this was one unit owner coming back and saying, "Oh, I think my 750-square-foot three-bedroom should really be a 750-square-foot two-bedroom," that would be one thing, but given that it's, you know, five owners, it sort of begs the question of, was this really marketed as a three-bedroom with the option to convert to two-bedroom? And also, you know, it's not surprising that in square footages of 750 to 900 square feet, people might want that to be a two-bedroom, because that's a pretty tight two-bedroom, let alone three-bedroom. So, it also begs the question of whether, you know, after the site-specific bylaw was approved with this condition that was intended to create these family-sized units, the developer then decided to create the met-square footages that weren't viable, effectively getting around something that had been, you know, negotiated into a site-specific bylaw or worked into a site-specific bylaw after conversations with planning staff. So, I have some trouble with an application that seems like it's trying to have us rubber-stamp maybe a design and sales process that was conducted in a way to get around something that was put into a site-specific bylaw that probably should have specified the minimum square footage of these units, but didn't. Can you maybe address those concerns?
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, and I, I mean, I asked a similar question of the client in terms of, you know, these are legitimately people who purchase these units, it's not a set of investors who are seeking to convert them to two-bedrooms, for instance. And I was advised that they were just, that's just the way it kind of panned out. I had a similar questions. I would say, certainly, when you have a development of this type and a building of this size, there are some areas where, you know, it's uncertain how you're gonna market units and how you're gonna sell the units. Ultimately, it went to market. I can't say who the buyers, what their interests are, but apparently, you know, I've been advised, you know, several of them obviously maintained them as three bedrooms, it was just some that had that size of unit being interested in. had that size of unit being interested in two bedrooms. I would say that it's, it is happening throughout the city, you're getting a little bit more of a reduction of the three bedrooms in certain circumstances. And in this circumstance, this just comes directly rather from the developer but from the purchaser themselves, who are seeking to use that space. Yeah, so I think that, you know, I understand your concern, but I, and I had similar questions, but as I understand it, these are legitimately just questions that are coming from the purchasers and to accommodate their interests.
So you probably don't know this, but are the purchasers in question investors or are they end-users?
I did ask that same question, as I noted, and apparently they are not investors, they're end-users. End-users is a difficult term. Buyers, yeah, just individual buyers.
Okay. Any further questions, panel? All right, thank you, sir. We'll take this into committee. Who wants to start us off? Bill?
Yeah, so, you know, I think my concerns with this application were stated in the concerns and question that I put to the proponent. I don't know that, you know, it's hard to unboil an egg, and this has been a project that seems to have been sold and has unit owners that I think have legitimate concerns about the ability to, you know, their desire, the desirability of a 900-square-foot three-bedroom unit, let alone a 750-square-foot one. I wonder how my fellow panel members feel about putting a note in the minutes for the record that we find it concerning that this might have been in contravention of the spirit of the site-specific bylaw, or maybe, or, well, something in the minutes for the record.
We can talk about it. I do find it interesting that planning staff who were party to the site-specific bylaw have not weighed in.
They haven't.
Anyone else have thoughts?
If I may just throw in my two cents, I think, yeah, I like, I'm glad that Mr. Gosh asked the questions, because I think it is concerning. I can appreciate if there are an individual unit owner who decides, you know, well, we were planning on having three children, but we'll just scale it down, and two-bedroom would be perfectly fine instead of three, and that configuration is a change, but when you have so many of them happening, my concern with all of these is always that investors don't necessarily have the same interests as ordinary individual homeowners would. So I find that piece a little concerning, and that what we do need are more family units, presumably this even in 900, as Mr. Gosh just pointed out, it's not exactly a mansion.
Okay. Ms. Zola?
I have been convinced by the explanation of the agent, and I think since the owner of the units would like to have larger bedrooms or space, that would be convincing.
I guess my, sorry, I jump in again. I guess my concern is more of a systemic one of, you know, what message do we give to developers that similarly negotiate? Like, there is a legitimate planning reason why site-specific bylaws have these unit minimums, otherwise they wouldn't be there. Now, recognizing planning staff hasn't come back to protect it, possibly because we're talking about so few units, they didn't see a need to weigh in. But I do feel like it sends a bit of a message that this is okay, where I don't think it's necessarily okay, even, and, you know, to say that it's minor from a planning perspective, that there be, you know, fewer three-bedroom units and desirable, you know, if we go through the four tests, it's arguable. I mean, given the situation that it's unit owners that are asking for it, and the building is built, and those units are the sizes that they are, I think I can find that supportable and say that it's minor. But I do think that there's a systemic concern that ideally I would like to have recognized in our decision somehow.
I'll win. I'll be a little more blunt than my colleagues. I don't support this at all. I think that my experience in planning and land use planning and provincial policy and municipal policy with respect to planning is that there is a strong desirability about, you know, having and supporting and encouraging particular family-sized units, but also three-bedroom units. This has been something that, in my view, has been an important underpinning to planning principle and trying to get the kind of family, or providing families with the opportunity to participate in densification and in living in desirable communities in these kinds of structures. So I appreciate that the overall percentage still stays at 25% for 2s and 3s by the introduction of additional 3s, but quite frankly, if the developer is marketing this based on the approval under the site-specific bylaws being a three-bedroom, I don't like the idea of them coming back and saying, you know, oh, I bought it as a three-bedroom unit, but now I want to make it a two, and that undermines, I think, a broader planning principle. And if you're going to buy a three-bedroom condo, that's what you're buying. So my view is I have difficulty supporting this one.
Okay, I appreciate that. And yeah, I would go further and say if you're a developer and you're marketing these and selling them and then have unhappy customers, I mean, there's a problem with how you've marketed and sold them as well.
Yep. So, look for a motion.
Okay, I mean, given the chair's comments and that they're very much in line with the concerns I had, I will move to refuse this application.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gosh to refuse. Do I have a seconder? Mr. Byatt, all in favor? Oppose? Ms. West, oppose that motion, but the motion carries. The application is refused. On to the next item, which is 674 Gerard East. This is an application to convert the existing two-story mixed-use building into a hotel. Committee has before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, planning rationale from the agent, and presentation materials from the agent, and we have correspondence of concern, interest from 67 Simpson Avenue. Good afternoon, sir. You don't look like Jacqueline.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Paul Demcek. I work with Jacqueline at Batory Planning and Management.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have some registered speakers.
Okay, we're going to need a presentation, sir.
Thank you, members. I have prepared a presentation. I think the committee has a copy.
Wait a sec, we'll pull it up. There it is there.
Thank you very much. So yes, I'm here today with my client, who is, I believe, dialed in virtually, representing the application at 674 Gerard Street. So slide two. This is a slide just regarding tourism in Toronto. So in 2017, just briefly, a city-initiated study found that there was a need for hotel development in the city, and these findings were further supported by a 2022 report analyzing the economic impact of local tourism and hospitality industries pre and post pandemic. Our discussions with city's economic development and culture staff has also confirmed that there is a rise in hyper-local tourism, where travelers are looking to stay in neighborhoods and not only in the downtown core. It is understood that both the existing and rebound in hotel developments have been largely focused in the luxury and upscale markets due to factors such as high land and construction costs, and that there is a need for mid-range hotels, particularly, sorry, to accommodate families. Next slide, please. So the subject site, it's a generally rectangular-shaped property on Gerard Street with the main street retail corridor specifically located in Chinatown East. It is currently occupied by a two-story building with vacant retail units at the lower levels, and the site is zoned for mixed-use development, which does permit a hotel use. Next slide, please. The site is located in the East Chinatown Commercial District in the broader Riverdale neighborhood, and the East Chinatown District is smaller compared to the main downtown Chinatown at Spadina Avenue and Dundas Street West, but has sustained a commercial presence since the 1970s and has been seeing a resurgence in new businesses emerge and contribute to the vitality of the area. Next slide, please. Just briefly on the surrounding context, the area is well-supported by transit and active transportation infrastructure, including bike lanes and frequent transit service, including TTC routes and streetcars abutting the property. Next slide, please. Just very briefly on the evolving context, so approximately 550 meters to the east is a future Gerard Carlaw Ontario Line Station, which is anticipated to bring a new transit-oriented community to provide a more robust amenity scheme for residents and visitors. Next slide, please. I'd just like to linger on this slide for a brief moment. So this is the short-term rental within the immediate context. So the site is within an area where there is very little former hotel and short-term rental accommodations available for visitors. The vast majority of short-term units, and particularly family-sized units, are supplied through properties in neighborhoods, through services right now such as Airbnb and Verbo. This is particularly concerning, as these properties are intended for long-term rentals, and the presence of short-term rentals are often undesirable to neighboring residents. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan on slide eight of the presentation, and the application before the committee today is to permit variances that facilitate the conversion of the existing two-story mixed-use building into a boutique hotel containing units of varying types and sizes, which include a total of nine units with one to three bedrooms in size. Several variances are required to permit the legally non-conforming building to continue to exist, and then additional variances are required to allow for appropriate privacy mitigation for the construction of window wells, which I'll briefly address. So the exterior changes to the building are highlighted on the site plan in this image provided. As you can see, aside from the new light wells, the property from a site plan perspective remains largely unchanged. Next slide. This is the, on slide nine, this is the front elevation. You can see it's being maintained, with the exception of removing the empty signboards that exist today on the property. Next slide, please. And these are the floor plans, which just highlights, which, sorry, which highlight the light wells. So the variances relating to separation distance between building walls on the same lot is to allow for light wells. These floor plans obviously demonstrate that. And so I will note, obviously, the initial plans provided some windows which did face adjacent properties. The application has since been revised, following discussions with planning staff to design for this, and these changes include removing the windows parallel to property lines, as well as increasing the light well width by about 40% or from 1.5 meters to 2.1. And then appropriate material and screening will be considered to maintain privacy for hotel guests, as well as adjacent properties, while providing for obviously natural light into the units. Next slide, please. I know there was a comment from the neighbor to the rear of the property, just as it relates to privacy issues. So the image on the left shows the existing condition at the rear of the site on the second floor, and since the existing building, being specifically the first floor, is actually built right to the property line, the zoning bylaw requirement for a fence at-grade is essentially ineffective in mitigating privacy concerns. So as such, what is being proposed, and it's shown on the far-right-hand side of this image, is a fencing detail that addresses the second-floor terrace, as well as a planting buffer to mitigate privacy and overlook impacts to the benefit of neighbors to the rear. Last slide, please. So just in brief conclusion, we have been working with planning staff since the formal application to ensure staff are satisfied with the proposed development. Further, again, I'll note that economic development staff have confirmed there is a market gap for mid-range hotel accommodations within Ward 14, and particularly units that can comfortably accommodate families. The proposed development, in my opinion, does obviously support the intent of the objectives of the official plan and relieves short-term rental pressures from nearby neighborhood-designated properties, which is what this proposal is intended to do. In summary, it's my opinion, it meets the four tests and represents good planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know we have some folks lined up to speak, but can you just, this seems like a very eclectic street and strip. It's got school, it's got churches, it's got retail, and it looks like it has residential. Can you just characterize the nature of this strip of Gerard? Like, it's a bit of everything, it looks like, particularly focusing on the residential stuff. Are those houses that are along there, they're residential, or are they commercial?
It's a complete combination of units and mix of typologies and build forms. We're abutting some semi-detached dwellings to the east of us. There are a mix of uses, some I would suggest even like live-work type units within some of those buildings and typologies, but it is a complete mix, some legal, some non-conforming to the current bylaws.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. All right, we have someone here to speak. Hi, come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me all?
We sure can. If you can give us your name and address, please, sir.
Please, thank you. My name is Shannon Zito. I'm at 67 Simpson Avenue, and my property is right behind 674 Gerard Street.
Okay.
So thank you for your time, folks, and definitely, first point I want to make is, you know, thankfully, my wife and I walk around the neighborhood, mixed, you know, neighborhood, residential, commercial. We noticed the notice on the door. We'd have to express our disappointment that even though on your website, the document was dated, letter of notice November 1st, no one, including any of my neighbors, received any of this notice. The Canada Post strike was November 15th, so two weeks is more than an acceptable amount of time for someone to mail something to us, so we find this is unacceptable that we weren't informed about this. And so that's some constructive feedback on, we got to improve on this, because neighbors need to know when things like this are happening. First point. Second point I'd make is, you know, definitely, you know, to your point, Mr. Speaker, you know, I mean, the neighborhood is a nice mix of residential and commercial, and we feel we're happy that the existing building isn't going to be altered so that, you know, they're building something higher or what have you, but we just feel, wouldn't this be better addressed to resolve some of the affordable housing issues that we have right now versus creating something that, although I've seen some of the measures online, and, you know, Paul and his client Andrew have been very transparent in sharing some information to address some of the security issues we have, why isn't this for affordable housing versus something that could potentially be a glorified Airbnb, which, again, I thought that's something that the city is trying to, you know, move away from? We have seen some, you know, the fencing issue, we're glad to see that, that that would kind of improve, but ultimately, does that really stop someone from throwing something over the fence, throwing some garbage around, you know, polluting in our neighborhoods? What is the result for this? We're encouraged to see that there might be an on-person, you know, a worker, concierge, up until about, I think, 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, but we know when the cat is away, the mouse play. So what happens from that, you know, witching hour, when it gets dark, from 8:00 or 9:00 PM to in the morning? You know, I think there is a number that apparently we can call, but obviously that number is only as good as the response rate, and we haven't seen a guaranteed kind of service level around, okay, if you have a complaint or call, do we resolve this in 15 minutes, 30 minutes? Because we don't want to have to call police and waste anyone's time, and, you know, especially waste the police resources to address these types of things. So that's kind of the concerns we have around security. Glad to see there's going to be an onsite person, but what happens afterwards? We understand there's going to be some security cameras and phone numbers to address all of this, but again, it's only as good as the responsiveness, right, and how well it's enforced. And again, you know, one to raise those issues, among other things, around why weren't we properly informed? We hope that a decision is going to be made today, because I think, I can speak for myself, my wife, and probably other neighbors on the call, we'd like a little bit more consultation time for this, because this is definitely that's something that's going to impact us. And again, why isn't this being zoned for more affordable housing versus a boutique hotel in a neighborhood where, we're not going to say it's not ideal, but I don't know if it's properly aligned to the nature of the residential, commercial area that you had asked, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, I'd just like to confirm, so you're saying you didn't receive the notice in the mail at all?
Nope. None of my neighbors did, and we didn't. We literally found out late last week. We had three hours to respond and submit my comments that day, you know what I mean? And that's why we think it's unacceptable. We know there's a Canada Post strike, but that was November 15th, November 1st. There's two weeks.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm, maybe through the chair to the secretary treasurer. Treasurer, I know that there were the automatic deferrals for the cases where we knew that the strike had impacted the notice. This sounds like one where we hadn't heard that, but it might be the case. Are we in a situation where we may need to defer this for lack of notice?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it sounds like that. I mean, we had reached out to the applicants and the landowners of the subject sites to ensure that they had at least received notice and seeing letters and, obviously, people registering, then they had received notice as well. I mean, you know this because of the sign that was posted. So that's one of our requirements, which worked, obviously.
Luckily, luckily, to be honest, yeah.
You're directly behind this.
We're directly behind. We literally were just walking through the neighborhood, and we said, what's this notice here? You know what I mean? And that's how we found out, literally, last minute, the same day that was the deadline to submit comments.
Fair enough, sir. Maybe, Sabrina, we can, are there other people speaking on this one?
I only have one other person registered, because I did have your spouse as well.
Yes.
Okay, so I assume that you're speaking on behalf of the
I'm speaking on behalf, yes.
Okay, so I do have an Andrew, but I think he's with Upstay. So, okay, that's it.
Oh, okay. I thought we had others.
So, I mean, if it is a situation where the committee finds, like, feels that it needs to be deferred, this also can be added to our January 8th hearing, because it is a double hearing.
Thank you, sir. Maybe we'll have the agent back and maybe have that discussion with the agent. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Do you want to come back, sir? You've heard the neighbor's concern. Sounds like he's not alone in not receiving anything. If you've been here for a while, you know that we've automatically deferred a few, because we knew the notice hadn't been provided. This might be one, frankly, that because people didn't receive letters, that it might be better in terms of making sure that people receive proper notification, that it get deferred. And as you heard Sabrina say, this could be rescheduled for January the 8th. So any thoughts on that, sir?
Just for the benefit of the committee, there's existing, one existing tenant in the building. We did confirm that that tenant did receive the mail notice. My client did obviously go and canvass the neighborhood. For the benefit of the committee, I can't confirm if everyone did or didn't receive that notice.
No, of course not.
So I don't want to, I don't want to suggest otherwise. So, but if that's the position of the committee, I do understand.
Yeah, no, it sounds, I think we should probably defer to the position that, for whatever reason, and because of the postal strike, that it's quite plausible that people, people's letters didn't end up getting to them. So maybe it's best that we defer it. So would you be comfortable with a deferral? I appreciate that it's not in your best interest, but it's a fairly short, just a time from here till then.
Understood. Just for the benefit of the committee, I think, I think it is fair, and in that timeframe, I think there's an opportunity to further address some of the concerns raised by the member of the public today. So we're more than happy to do that in that time period.
Okay, I think that's great. Thank you very much for that. I think that's probably a pretty good question.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just for the benefit of everyone listening in, for the January 28th hearing, proper notice, sorry, January 8th hearing, proper notification is signage on the property, as well as the city's website up to date, as well as the Application Information Centre. There will also be a posting in the Toronto Star.
Okay.
Okay, so we will not be mailing out notices, okay? We'll be doing other things to notify based on what the province has said for us to do during this postal strike. Okay.
So you understand, so what you should be sharing with your neighbors, for example, is keep your eye on the Toronto Star, and if you or your neighbors see notice, share it amongst yourselves.
I have and will continue. And actually, the good news is, you know, I will say with Paul and Andrew that we're in good spirits, we're very transparent. Andrew, who's on the line, has actually reached out to me, so we're going to have some more discussion.
Okay.
So again, just want to raise the concerns, but again, I think we're moving the right of the right.
Okay, I think that's, yeah, that's, that sounds valuable as well. And, yeah, sorry, I was just going to echo the Secretary Treasurer's comments that, about the notice.
Yep.
That it won't, that it won't be mailed, just so that you're not given, given the strike, but that it will be considered proper notice under the Planning Act.
So with all that, let's take this into committee. I think perhaps a deferral is appropriate. So does anyone want to move a motion to that effect? Sahir?
I'll move that, Chair. I'd like to move a motion to defer this application to be heard on January the 8th.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion to defer, seconded by Mr. Gosh. All in favor? Great. Thank you, sir. Good luck. Sorry for the inconvenience, but I'm happy that you understand where we're at.
And through you, Mr. Chair, just keep the signage on the property up, and we'll tell you how to update that sign with the new date, time, and location.
Great. Thank you very much, members.
Thank you, sir. Item number 23 is deferred, and we move to item number 24, which is 689 Markham Street. And this is an application to alter the existing two-story townhouse dwelling by constructing a front basement walkout, a front-covered porch with stairs, and a front and rear one-story additions, a rear second-story addition above the existing one-story portion, and a rear ground-floor deck, and a rear second-story balcony. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, revised site plans received November 21st, two photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, email correspondence between the agent and Transportation Services, presentation materials from the agent, staff report from community planning, and seven letters of support from several addresses on Markham Street and on London Street.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Hello, good afternoon. This is Nick Allen from Replacement Design, speaking on behalf of the owners. My address is 16D 160 The Westway at Tobico, Ontario.
Sir, you submitted a presentation, did you?
I did, yep.
Well, why don't we walk the panel through that?
Absolutely. Okay, so I see you have it open here, and I'll just hop into giving my presentation. So as noted, the proposal is to reconstruct the front porch while adding a mudroom addition within its existing footprint to relocate the ground-floor entry and basement walkout stairs, and to add a ground-floor rear and second-floor rear addition. Could I see the next slide, please? Just to begin with the collaboration with the city, prior to the hearing today, we did have some discussion with community planning, transportation, and urban forestry. Based on discussions and recommendations from community planning, the proposed alteration to the front yard pathway on city property was revised to minimize the reduction of soft landscaping. We did submit and update a set of plans based on these recommendations, and the changes made had no impact to the requested variances. Community planning also made recommendations on conditions of approval, which we have no objection to. Urban forestry did note the tree in the adjacent front yard was larger than we had on the original site plan, so you can see that it's been updated on the updated proposal slide there. Finally, transportation had no objections for the proposal and just noted that an additional permit from their office would be required. Next slide, please. So this is in regards to variances six and seven. When reviewing these variances, I asked the panel members to please consider the context of the property. The front property line is very close to the front of the home. The majority of the changes at the front of the house are within the existing footprint of the front porch. The proposal results in a very minor reduction in soft landscaping, as illustrated in the slide. While not included in soft landscaping, the ground-floor entry stairs would be open tread to allow for daylighting into the basement, which would also allow for some level of drainage below the stairs. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is in regards to variances one, two, five, and eight. As noted in my introduction, our proposal is to reconstruct the front porch within the existing footprint. This is being done to ensure adequate headroom above the basement walkout stairs and bring the porch level a bit closer to the front ground-floor entry. Variance one relates to the proposed ground-floor front addition. The addition would be within the existing footprint of the front porch. It would also serve as an entryway and a mudroom to the home. Variance two relates to the reconstruction of the front porch, which, again, is within the same footprint as the existing porch. Variance five and eight relate to the relocation and reconstruction of the basement and ground-floor entry stairs. Please note that the existing ground-floor entry stairs do encroach beyond the front property line. The rationale for the relocation and redesign is to allow for ease of access, code compliance, natural lighting into the home for both the ground floor and basement. Next slide, please. Variances three and four, so both of these variances are fairly common in the neighborhood. As listed in the slide, there are numerous homes within the area where similar variances have been approved. I would also just like to note that we do have letters of support from both adjacent neighbors of the subject property. We've gained that support, working in collaboration with those neighbors. This included stepping back the rear second-floor addition. And then in regards to the variance for FSI, I'd like to note that a portion of the non-underpinned basement was included in the floor space calculation. This is because of the basement's proximity to grade. If it were excluded, our proposal would have an FSI of closer to 0.9. Next slide, please. Again, I just wanted to touch on the fact that our clients have taken time to speak with their neighbors to help develop this design. In conclusion, I believe, given the context of the property and surrounding homes in the neighborhood, our proposal is fairly modest in nature and satisfies the four tests. This would conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Panel, any questions? All right, no questions. Let's take this into committee. Sahir?
I'll start, Chair. I think this is a very straightforward application. I don't see any issues with it. The only thing that I noticed, there is a planning, planning condition attached. And the condition is that the owner shall construct the front porch enclosure, new front porch substantially in accordance with drawings Z2, Z11, Z13, received on the 21st of November. Outside of that, nothing else I can see is in MetroLink's advisory note, but that's about it. So I'm
Okay, you want to move a motion?
I'd like to move a motion to approve.
Subject to the planning condition.
Subject to planning condition.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Byatt to approve. I have a seconder, Mr. Gosh. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you, sir. Item number 25 is 79 Bartlett. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear walkway, also to alter the existing one-story rear detached garage by constructing a complete second-story addition for one laneway suite. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot, one in the main dwelling and one in the laneway suite. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, three photographs of the subject property.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon. Oh, Mr. Perez.
Hello, good afternoon, Chairman and committee members. My name's Dave Perez. I'm here on behalf of the owner and the designers for this project. As you can see, we're here for a laneway suite. The variances are pretty much all existing conditions. Width of the garages already at that width. The distance to the laneway is also existing. Soft landscaping, we're actually improving from what's there. And I feel that these variances are very minor in nature, and they meet the four tests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Panel, any questions on this one? It does seem fairly straightforward. No questions? Thank you, Mr. Perez. We'll take this into committee.
I appreciated the presentation's brevity, given that I think the assumption underlying that was correct, that this is, these variances are very obviously minor. There is no community opposition. This is a very supportable application. So for those reasons, I would just move to approve it.
No conditions? No? Okay. Motion to approve by Mr. Gosh, seconded by Mr. Byatt. All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Item 26 is our last item of the day. And this is 355 Coxwell Avenue. This is an application to alter the development standards as approved under site-specific zoning bylaws 1227-2017 and 1228-2017 for a new six-story residential building by increasing the residential gross floor area, reducing the width of the bicycle space, as well as eliminating the bicycle maintenance facilities, landscape strip, and parking space setback. There will be a total of 33 affordable residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, copy, covering letter from the agent, previous decision numbers affecting the subject property, an arborist report, presentation materials from the agent, and the site-specific zoning bylaws relative to this property. We have an email correspondence from transportation. We have staff reports from the MetroLinks and the Director of Community Planning, whereupon community planning is suggesting that the committee should approve this application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon.
Name and address, please, sir.
Roland Brom Coltoff, Raw Design Architects, we're at 317 Adelaide Street, what's it, West?
Great, thanks. This appears to be fairly minor and technical, and we do have support for this application from the city. Maybe just a very quick overview, so the panel members understand what you're proposing.
Yeah, there was a presentation that went with this. I can quickly, oh, thank you, I could quickly rush through that. You can go to the next slide. The site was originally subject of a rezoning application in 2017. Habitat for Humanity picked up the site in 2019, and has been working with the city since that date towards getting site plan approval. So we're now at 2024. We do have a deadline to get funding in place to get this built, so we're in a bit of a rush to get, hopefully, this approved. The variances requested here are, if you will, an oversight when it originally came to committee back in 2021. So this is cleaning it up and making it technically correct. The key drawing you will probably want to look at is page 11 of that presentation. You can see that the site plan, when it came before committee back in 2021, is exactly the same as the site plan currently today. So we're not asking for any changes beyond what the city, what city staff have been looking at for the past three years as part of this site plan application. We're just trying to make the zoning align with staff's concerns and comments. I would just add further, the one note about the bike maintenance area. This is a new requirement under the zoning bylaw that came into effect subsequent to this application going forward. Habitat would prefer that they use that area for stroller storage. It's a family-oriented building, rather than have the bicycle maintenance facility, which is a new requirement, again, that was not contemplated at the time the building design went forward. So things like the height of the building, the overall mass, in fact, the GFA, even though we say the GFA is bigger, it all fits within the same envelope that the committee saw back in 2021. saw back in 2021, so we're hoping that you're okay with these minor variances, and we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you, sir. It was a good explanation. Panel, any questions on this one? Seems fairly straightforward. Okay, thank you very much, sir. We'll take this into committee. We'll take this into committee. Sahir?
Thank you, Chair. I think despite the large number of, what appears to be a detailed variety of variances, I think they're fairly straightforward. I'm also quite heartened to see that this is Habitat for Humanity project. They have a tremendous track record. So I don't believe, I think there's a, planning has a recommendation to approve, but there are no conditions other than the MetroLink's one, which is all the...
This advisory?
It says condition, I think, so we should...
Through you, Mr. Chair, it is the warning clause again.
The warning clause again.
Okay. You want to put that in? You can depart from your panel member's view on this one, if you like.
I think my colleague, Mr. Gosch, made a very good case for ignoring the...
Oh, my goodness. So cavalier.
...lead from Mr. Gosch and ignore it. So I'd like to move to approve with no conditions.
All right. Motion by Mr. Byatt to approve this application, seconded by Mr. Gosch. All in favor? Okay, you have your approval, sir. Thank you very much. And that concludes today's proceedings. We are adjourned at 3:34 PM. Thank you all. Thanks, staff.
Thank you, everyone.